Come on, sort of pop. Let's go.
Item 17, An Ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Amending the Off Premise Signs Section of the 2013 Shaped Places Zoning Ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls.
Thank you. With item number 17, this is the result of a study group that was just recently completed. The study group was appointed by the mayor and was led by City Council Rick Kylie. The group met five times and offered a time for public comments and input at each time. The first meeting, the group reviewed the 2013 Shaped Places zoning ordinance for off-premise signs and map locations. Other municipal ordinances were also reviewed. The group focused the study on locations where billboards would be appropriate, both in context of forms and existing transportation corridors. The study group was concerned with future expansion of billboards. The study group's final draft is seen before you. It provides for 10 billboard off-premise sign opportunity overlay districts. The opportunity district is to preserve and protect sensitive land uses and promote the safety of the traveling public. In general, this is where the locations of the off-premise signs or billboards could be located, along with other standards that are currently or proposed to be added to the zoning ordinance. And any changes to this opportunity district, as you see before this, before you, would still have to go back before this body and city council for any future expansion, similar to what we do for zoning approval in the future. So it received consensus and support from the study group, and it's been recommended for approval at Planning Commission. Following that, it would go for city council's approval.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
Madam Chair, I have a couple. Jeff, so help me understand, these are the only places that billboards or off-premise signs can go?
That's correct. Within this opportunity corridor, if this ordinance gets passed by city council.
And so that would include a billboard or an off-premise sign. So if, say, I was Walmart at 85th and Minnesota, and I own the property back from the road, but I want to put my sign out on the road, that would be not permitted?
Correct. It would be an off-premise sign. You'd not be able to place it off your premise.
Okay. Other question, we talk about to preserve the landscape quality, aren't all we doing is consolidating or concentrating signs in these areas and not allowing them in other areas?
That'd be a summary, yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Or the applicant.
Or the applicant.
I guess I'm the applicant, too. Staff applicant. Thank you. I can be called up.
All right. I'll look for commission action. Any comments from the audience? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up and comment on this item?
My name is Jeff Gould. I live on 85th Street. And I am nowhere near any of these existing signs. And I believe the question you asked to Nick was that would there ever be any more signs in Sioux Falls? Well, I think there would be if Sioux Falls got bigger, wouldn't it?
No, I don't.
Are we just, are we saying there will only be billboards at those places, ever? Or are we saying that as the city expands, we're looking at this as a blueprint for future expansion?
I think that may be a question for, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
Let's bring staff back up.
I can ask Jeff to come back up.
Sean might have an answer to that, too.
Well, I can. We talked about this being kind of the establishment of the existing corridors, the opportunity districts, as we call them. The intent is that as the future of Sioux Falls changes and expands, and there's additional opportunities that seem appropriate because we have the right type of zoning in those areas, other things, that there may be a future opportunity district that may be requested. I think the billboard committee fellow was really important that we follow some extra rules and extra steps to make sure that we have public comment and feedback before any of those expansions happen. And so I think we were pretty careful to define specific opportunity districts to make sure that we didn't have really the situation that happened at Sycamore and 41st, happened where it just showed up in the middle of nowhere and everybody was surprised. The intent here is to kind of get it to be fairly predictable and something that gets community feedback before any expansion of those opportunity districts is approved.
That makes sense to me. That's what my, that was my understanding, that we're looking towards a city of Sioux Falls, not in the next 10 years, but 20 and 30 years. One of the things that I found very interesting was that a gentleman from Lamar Sign spoke and said that when a sign is in, it's in. It's property rights, and they protect that to generations. His statement that I thought was interesting was that your and my grandchildren will be dead, and the billboard regulations will hold for that property. So I listened to that with good, with open ears, and thinking that the decisions that we make here today will be effective for the long distant future. And the ones I'm most concerned with is the distance from residential areas. And I think 500 feet is on the table as an option. That seems a little close, but that, at least to me, would seem the minimum. Because one of the other things that I found out, and maybe I've been misspoken to, is that once a billboard is in place, you're not really allowed to regulate what kind of billboard, whether it be lit or a Daktronics-type billboard. Well, a sign that's 40 feet above the ground, which should be roughly the height of this building here, can be seen for quite a distance. That's its purpose, its design, if it's lit 24 hours a day. And now if that image can change every six seconds, that is a whole nother kettle of fish altogether. And I think to protect future people who don't even own homes yet, who maybe aren't even born yet, those houses that will be settled in Sioux Falls in the year 2050, I think should be protected from a flashing image 500 feet from their homes. And that's my concern. Currently, this doesn't affect me. I doubt that it will affect me in my lifetime. I have no dog in this fight, except the concern for future citizens of the town. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Jeff.
Yes.
If you're okay. I mean, so I understand that you live away from this, and it would protect your house, in theory, right now. There's a lot of people that live along those corridors that it doesn't protect, right?
Okay, so answer the question for, ask the question again. I'm not sure I understood it.
If you're concerned about protecting people that own homes, and we think billboards should not be anywhere near them, then shouldn't we not have the...
500 feet was the word I heard. I thought 500 feet is the distance.
But it's 500 feet from these current corridors. It's, you would have to expand the corridor or anything like that in any future area to develop one.
That would be true, yeah. No. I don't know of anybody who's here who currently has a home within those corridors. I don't know if they're aware of it. A lot of people aren't paying attention. Did that answer your question?
Yep, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item? Come on up. You could state your name and address, please.
I was just waiting till, can you be moved a little bit farther up, so I can see where it's taken from? Can it go a little farther? Okay, yes. My name is Bonita Schwan, and I live at 7601 South Audi Avenue, which is actually at the corner of Audi Avenue and 85th Street. And I'm providing you this picture of a visual that was taken from the front of my house there, and that's 500 feet. And I'm providing you this picture. It's just not about my house. What I, what is 500 feet and a billboard someday from someone else's house. And that's my front porch. That's my bedroom on the side there. And when Jeff alluded to the digital signs that we're going to, and the reality of what 500 feet is not a great distance from someone's home. So I provide you that picture, and we're very appreciative of all the time that the billboard study worked on this and took our comments. And after they passed the 500-foot premise from single-family homes, that's when we went out to my house and walked off what that would be. So I'd just like you to consider before you place your vote this evening, that that's just not my house. That would be the view from any single-family home that potentially could have a billboard the size as Jeff referenced. Actually, Jeff's house has a porch in front, you know, and that is the view that anybody in Sioux Falls could have, looking out into a billboard from the front of their house or the back of their house, this side of the house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address this item?
I'm Marty Jacobson with Lamar Outdoor Advertising. I guess, you know, before making an approval on this, I think the committee did a great job. Everything looks pretty much in line with what we agreed to. There are a couple clarity items that we'd just like to bring to your attention, I guess, just for consideration. If I look at the ordinance, the amending code ordinances of the city that I printed off from the website, I go to page five, and I never did get a, I guess, a clear, I guess this was kind of written on and things like that, but I just want to do a clarity on page five. Everybody has that one. There's a writing on there. It says, "Leave it in, not included in amendment." I guess I would like a clarity to see if that was the whole 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items there, or what was that pertaining to?
You're referring to the changes in the ordinance on page number five? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yep. I'm looking at the draft.
Okay.
And on page five of the draft, I'm looking at, there was some writing on here that looked like, I think, I believe I was told Shauna included in there. It says, "Leave it in, not included in amendment," and then it has an arrow there. So I'm asking for, I guess, clarity on that before you vote for approval, that we would like to have clarity on the variance section of this draft.
I don't see that on my, is anyone, am I missing it, or I don't see that at all? So I'm not sure what you're referring to. I apologize.
What he's referring to is this is a draft, and he has a copy of a draft, and I don't know.
Okay, so it's just a draft that was addressed, but this is, that isn't the final document? So it's just a draft?
It's not the final document, but I guess we would like to make it public and get it recorded, that it's a concern of clarity, that I don't know what that "leave it in, not included in the amendment" is concerning there. Is it including 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 of that whole paragraph, or is it just including what's crossed off there? So I guess clarity before an approval would be, I guess, a good thing.
Yeah, I guess since it is just a draft, that's what it is, just that, a draft, and I can't really address it.
I just want to bring it to everybody's attention, because that's one thing I think that just needs to be clarified before the final draft, just so, I guess, the people participating in the whole process understands. The other item I'd just like to bring, I guess, and kind of bring to an attention, in the recommendation and in the draft, I guess, just in my understanding, and I don't know if everybody that was going to the sessions that the committee held, understands that not one thing in the recommendations are even, I guess, what I want to say is, it doesn't matter for any of the 10 opportunity districts, there's not one, I guess, change in that. So the opportunity districts, everything going forward is pertaining to new opportunity districts, not the ones that are current. So I just didn't know if everybody quite understood that either. I know it was a question that we had, but there wasn't one change in the way the opportunity district sits now to any of those, as far as spacing, as far as just everything that was included with some of the recommendations. So I just wanted to bring that to the committee's attention as well. There wasn't any changes to the original opportunity district.
And actually, that's not quite true. There were some changes, like the 10 feet from any part of the sign. That was included with both the existing opportunity districts as well as future opportunity districts. There are some requirements that change through these recommendations.
Okay. And I guess...
Basic criteria didn't.
They were more with, like, being around churches and things like that, or were some of the, just the verbiage on it that were included, but nothing as far as spacing. I think it's still 600 feet. And then residents didn't change, and I know the new districts are going to ask for 500 feet. None of the districts here made any changes to that. So if I was to go in and build a new board, I wouldn't necessarily have to be within, I mean, the distance wouldn't have to be further than 500 feet, from my understanding. Can you clarify that?
I guess, I don't know what...
Huh?
I guess I don't know what you're saying. To clarify it.
Well, I mean, I was just, would like to make it record, so you'd consider some of these things before the final approval. Because there was really, and I guess, I think, you know, as far as the residency, the 500, the spacing's been a huge thing. One of the things that I think, you know, as far as Lamar would recommend, is maybe more spacing between the signs. The radius of 1,000 feet would eliminate exploding of signs as well. So that was the one thing that maybe would be considered, as far as the final recommendation. And then the last thing is, with our industry, is there's three sign sizes, and some of these opportunity districts have opportunities on interstates. So the ordinance says 288 square feet is the largest size, and 288 feet on a street that's basically just commercial street is just fine and is adequate. But if you get traffic going 55 to 65, 75 miles an hour on the interstate traffic or four-lane, we have three standard sizes. And I guess for advertisers, if somebody was in Chicago, was going to come here, and they want to ship their vinyl over for us to use, you know, it's a benefit to them to have standard sizes, as far as on interstate and things like that. So I'd ask to maybe recommend, as far as interstate traffic, we use a standard size of 14 by 48 billboard. It's 672 square foot to consider on interstate traffic, to use that appropriate size as far as the standard. And then as far as four-lane highway traffic, 10-636, which is 388 feet, square feet, to be used in those situations where traffic is actually going 55 miles per hour on those highways, too. So something to consider. I appreciate, you know, the work the committee did on it, and I, you know, take those into consideration. And I appreciate your time tonight. Any questions?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, so I want to kind of clarify something you said and make sure I heard that correctly. So what you're saying is the 500-foot setback is not part of these opportunity districts, as they're shown on the screen. That's only for any new opportunity district.
That's what I'm aware of.
And that's, I think, the way I read the ordinance, too. Is that...
Yes, that is correct.
So we would protect, I mean, if protection of homes is what we're talking about, anybody that's not on one of those major roads, we're saying, you're not protected. Anybody that's off of those, you are.
Well, there is protections for those as well. The, I think the committee discussed quite a bit about the validity of looking at potentially having a much longer offset, you know, 500-foot offset to existing. There are some issues with that. We would end up with noncompliant signs pretty much everywhere in town, which creates other issues, you know, for staff and for planning commissions, et cetera. So what we tried to do was come up with an approach that allowed many of the signs that are currently in place to remain as a kind of a grandfathered condition, and then looking at new opportunity districts that have a little bit longer distance. As we move away from the core of the city, it made sense to have a little more buffer between these and residential homes. And so I think that's why the consensus was around, let's let that apply to the new opportunity districts.
But, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Sean, if somebody were to build a new sign in those current opportunity districts, they're not subject to that 500-foot setback?
That is correct.
Okay. I guess my comment on that is if it's good for someplace, it should be good for every place. And I understand that stuff to do, but it seems to be picking and choosing where the setback is.
And I guess that comes to the point, there's really two different ordinances.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes?
My name is Pat Jackson with Skyline Digital Billboard Company here in Sioux Falls, and I just wanted to talk to you guys, you know, this 500-foot spacing that we're all talking about. Mike Cooper, head of planning, his recommendation was 125-foot setback in the early on for these new districts. It got switched within the billboard committee meetings to 250. Shauna, the city employee, thought that was an unreasonable request as well. And at the recommendation of a few citizens, it was switched to 500 people. So I just want to point out, the two city officials, whose recommendations were 125, and then the 250, she believed was unreasonable, their paid position recommendations were thrown out the door, and 500 is what was decided to go with by the committee. You talked about making that 500-foot rule, you know, compliant to these opportunity districts. She'd had some numbers that if it was 250-foot, 40% of the current boards would be noncompliant. And if we did the 500-foot rule within the current boards, it would eliminate 90% of the boards. So in essence, you know, if we do that 500-foot rule for these new opportunity districts going forward, you know, if we expand the opportunity districts, basically going to make the billboards nonexistent. I mean, you're, it's going to be impossible to put them in, because there's, of the current boards, you know, 95% of the boards being eliminated, I mean, there's not going to be any opportunity for future growth of these boards. And the gentleman from Lamar had stated 1,000 feet. That's great for Lamar. There's 195 some current boards in Sioux Falls, 175 of them are Lamar. So, you know, the three other small companies, we have 20 boards combined. So forcing the little guy out, great for them, but I just wanted to point that out as well. So any questions for me? I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? All right, no. Thank you.
You bet.
All right. I will look for commission action.
I think we might have...
Oh, I'm sorry. We have another one. Gentlemen, please come forward.
John Stratman from 325 West La Quinta Circle. It was stated here earlier that this will be the template for future billboard placement. And while I and people in my neighborhood don't live in any of those opportunity zones, it's the future that Mr. Gould so adequately referred to. Where are we going to put these billboards in the future? And one of the particular issues that I have is the distinction between the distance from one billboard to another versus one billboard to my bedroom window. I don't know why it can't be consistent. If it's 600 feet from one billboard to another, why can't it be 600 feet from my bedroom window to a billboard? Now, there's a lot of people that aren't here tonight, because they're out working, working to pay property taxes, so that they can continue to enjoy the use of that property. And they have an expectation, as do I, and I suspect everybody else, that's going to be buying homes or building homes in the next 20 or 30 years. And that is that they will have unfettered use and the ability to enjoy their private property. And as was stated earlier, put a billboard 40 feet in the air, they're not going to light that thing with a 60-watt bulb. Believe me, those lights are going to be coming in and shining in everybody's windows all around the area. And I would ask that you make the change and make it consistent, 600 feet from one billboard to another and 600 feet from private property to the billboard. I would ask that you give that due consideration, because it's an important thing, not only for people that are out there now, but future development. It just is. And it goes to being able to enjoy your private property.
All right, thank you. Anyone else that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I will look for commission action.
I move for approval, as presented.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I'm going to bring up something that Nick just said, that if you do have a single family in that corridor, and you, existing, that you can put one up any place, basically, with no more, with no restrictions. The 600 feet doesn't, the 600 feet between billboards does not affect the existing corridors, correct? It's just in the new proposed...
That's already the requirement. The 600 feet between billboards is already the requirement in all of the existing opportunity districts, once they get established this way.
Would be, would be that also, okay. But like I said, I just don't feel it's, yeah, if they want to put up another billboard, they got, they got 1,200 feet between two billboards, and they put another one up, and it affects the single family. I, in those corridors, I think that that should be added to this, that in the existing corridor, that should be added.
It's also important to keep in mind that even in the, these opportunity districts, they still have to be on a specific type of property. It can't go on, for example, if somebody has a piece of property that's residential and it fronts one of these opportunity districts, they can't put an off-premise sign in their yard. It has to be on commercial property and a few other specific types of uses. And so that starts to limit the spacing and the opportunities for additional signs. Then there's a distance between signs that's a limitation. And then there is a distance from adjacent properties that are already sensitive uses. I don't remember that specific number, Jeff, but we did, just to understand where the 500 came from, we researched, I think it was six or eight other communities. I think Rochester, Minnesota, ended up being one that was probably the most similar to what a lot of the discussions centered around. And I think they had, I think it was the 500-type range there as well. And so that's a lot of why, I think, as we're looking at future opportunity districts, we thought it made sense to require a little bit farther distance. But as the gentleman stated earlier, 500-foot distance right now on the existing opportunity districts would essentially outlaw billboards where they already stand. And that's not good policy either. And so we tried to balance, through our discussions, property owner rights, and obviously, there's freedom of speech rights. There's all kinds of things that are related to billboards, and then property rights of the individuals that are either adjacent or nearby. And so there's always kind of a careful balance to make sure that these kinds of rules protect everybody as much as we can, but still allow things to happen, because changes happen. Areas change, and there's always things to be considered that people want to do, and we have to respect that and try to come up with some legislation that makes as much sense as we can, and things that are as reliable as they can be.
Thank you, Sean.
Madam Chair. Sean, you were on that committee, I know you guys, you met five times?
Yep, that's correct.
When you come up with your recommendation, was it unanimous? Did everybody kind of come to the same conclusion?
We did. We came to a final consensus. We took a lot of, a lot of people's comments in consideration and I think that's why it ended up being 500. I think for two of those meetings, we talked about it being 250 as being the distance from sensitive uses. I think there were probably half of our committee that were a little uncomfortable with that. And after more discussion and some of the community input that we had, I think everybody had a higher comfort level with making it 500 if it applied to the new opportunity districts. It causes other issues in these opportunity districts as shown. Does that answer your question, Kenny?
Madam Chair, and I think that's where I'm struggling with this one because it seems to be two separate ordinances. If you're in the opportunity district, you have different rules than if you're outside of it or a potential new one.
And I think that's why these are called opportunity districts, because essentially each one of these 10 could have a different rule on it based upon the conditions of that district. And at least that was my understanding. So future opportunity districts can be different. It's a little more, a little more work for staff to keep track of which opportunity district this lands in or things like that, but...
Seems a little more subjective then, too, is it's okay one place, but not okay another place. And I, I struggle with that.
And I think part of our, part of my thinking, anyway, was these are, you know, if you drive down Minnesota where it's close to 22nd Street, that's an entirely different neighborhood than if I'm driving down 85th. And so opportunity districts, to a certain degree, want to kind of respect the type of, and the quality of the neighborhood they're into. And so just to apply a single measurement across all things and say, this is where it should be everywhere, may not be as receptive as it should be to the conditions of that neighborhood.
That can be a slippery slope, too, if we're going to say one neighborhood is better or more important or different than another one.
I, I don't think that was our intent.
Okay.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign?
Yes.
Right, I believe we have, could you raise your hands one more time? All in favor signify by saying yes. So we have five yes, oppose, same sign, and three no. Motion passes.
Come on, sort of pop, let's go. Come on, let's go. Come on.